Valerie Anderson.
Here.
Toni Fadini.
You.
Alan Brown.
Gregory Pava.
Here.
Michelle Bora.
Here.
Emily Denver.
James Fisher.
Kelly Lott.
Jennifer.
Miles Sumato.
Here.
Peter Seid.
Ellen, Kelly, and Peter.
We have eight, so we've got to talk.
Alan, Emily, Kelly, Peter.
All right. I have two opportunities for the board to comment on the Juddites. All right, so you know them, then I think we'll all move on. Consent the Juddites. Is there anyone who decides to move anything from consent to Juddites? Which is the approval minutes of our November 12th and November 24th retreat in our Education meeting on November 7th. All right, so you know them, who wants to rule anything consent to Juddites approved. The board of the chair, I don't have a report tonight other than to thank those board members who attended our retreats and looking at the issues presented by those. There was a lot of work. Do you have a question for us?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Just a couple of announcements. I want to let you know that we have a team visiting the Boad schools in Connecticut. And I believe we have one or two in December and possibly one in January. I know Ken Gallo sent you an invitation, so they're interested in going. And I'm Ken Cody, who's calling out everybody else advanced. They're disappointed we certainly invited. Did you? I just checked. Michelle.
I'm number one. Okay.
So, that's great. So, I think that will be helpful as we work on our report application.
Sure.
We are, just so you know, Chairman and I are starting just some communications with Region Six to see if there's anything we can do together to help defer costs. So, we're doing that. And then we do have a meeting in January where Chairman and I are meeting with the Selectmen, the Board of Finance Chairs, Region Six Superintendent and Chairman of the Board, and Representative King, and Representative O'Neal, and Jonathan Costa, just to give us an idea of Western Connecticut, what's going on, and really to help people understand the intricacies of re-regionalizing, deregionalizing, all of those things that come up, so that the people who are leadership positions understand the facts that are here again for people who understand and have some knowledge. So, I'm excited about that. And then we have Thursday night, the holiday is a lot.
I just want to ask, so you met with you and Region Six? And then the, are those the only two?
Right now, it's the only two that we're inviting, yes.
Okay. And that's in January?
Yeah, that's January, I want to say the ninth or something. January ninth, it's Friday morning. It's just a continuing group of people who meet with the Selectmen to try to get us on the same page to build consensus. So, I think it's important.
That's great.
Yeah.
And then others. What's the role of Jonathan Costa? He's related to education connections.
Yes. And, well, he's related in the fact that there are people who really want us to understand all of the issues of possibly regionalizing with our regions joining those regions. Jonathan not only worked with us, he's worked with Region Six at Litchfield, he's worked with Norfolk, Culver. So, Jonathan can give the people who aren't really as knowledgeable about the intricacies of doing this, and gives specifics, because there are people who just think, oh, we can solve this problem, let's all just join Litchfield tomorrow. And, you know, just, we need to really explore the different possibilities to let people know, you know, we have, as a group, dug out due diligence, and we have done some research, and it's not as easy as just counting fingers and everything. So, he's just another person there to give his perspective.
May I? The thought was that there are questions that come up that some of us just don't have the answers to. He has some agreements, and he may have answers that the rest of us just don't know.
So, is he a paid consultant?
No, I just invited him.
Okay.
Who was, who was desired to invite legislators, so, King would be there. Is there anything, Mrs. Tate, you do?
Can I just break that sentence twice? It's standing here.
Standing here. Well, I'm sorry.
Try to get as many people together who may be able to answer questions.
And then, only other thing is, we do have a new evening security guard, he's here, Andrew St. John. We saw him, he was walking around a lot, he was high-wide. So, that's my report. Thank you.
All right, so any questions? And moving on to community reports. Education, Michelle, please.
Um, no. I believe that on the schedule for night, for this month, our December 15th meeting is an overview of the music program with presentations from the teachers. And I believe Mr. Molly was going to do something in the TV studio. I don't, I'll have to double-check to make sure that that's still happening, because that was, that was added after we put Taylor back to show. So, that's on for our next meeting in a few weeks. Is that?
Education, Michelle.
Um, I have not been, and our next meeting is this Thursday, and it's the concert. Last, last meeting, it was a soccer game, and so I missed a couple, and I apologize. I should maybe see if I can email out and see if someone else can go when I can't, but that's why I haven't been.
So, what's your current opinion?
We don't have anything.
All right. Finances?
We mean that this evening, we went over the financial report as of November 27th. We're tracking as far as 3% or $1.1 million in budget, tracking approximately as we did in the last year this time. It was very routine, there were too many issues concerning financials. Then we discussed the transition of life insurance, long-term disability, we're going to Anthem, and we are, that's going smoothly, and we are saving about $17,000 to that transition, plus, of course, some savings in our medical expenses. And then, we talked about our Wells Fargo transition for the pension plan, which also went very smoothly. The investment portion of the portfolio has been liquidated, it's being transferred to be about $1.8 million. So, we are going to sit and go through that portfolio, our connection, connection to Wells Fargo sometime in February 29th, or I think it's 23rd. So, we are out of date, and sit with them, just see, you know, what the pension looks like, what those investments going forward. And, we talked about the electrical generation contract, really fascinating stuff here. Bob was able to get us a 12.9 kilowatt hour for December, January, and February, but he was able to fix nine months, March to November, coming at half of that, 0.0755 constellation, and it's part of a group of districts that have come together, and this pool has increased from seven to 12. So, we have fixed, basically, for nine months, half the expense in the next three months. And we are picking around some information about the sure contract, which is up, which will be renegotiated, but we'll just start that conversation.
All right. I'm sorry, what was it? Didn't you mention with regard to savings? How much did you help me?
It's $17,000.
Right.
Life insurance, $17,000.
So, $17,000, there are savings from what?
In some life.
And what we moved from some life to, over to 13 liters?
That's also long-term.
It's a two-year fixed contract. Any other questions for that? Negotiations, do you have any?
Uh, no. We have, we continue to discuss the, I believe at our next meeting, we'll be negotiating very, very hard.
I didn't speak up.
I'm sorry. We will continue to discuss a lot of the administrators contract at our next meeting. That's all that's pending. At 5:30, and that's all that's pending. We will shortly be finishing a little round of negotiations with the stewards and office directors.
Can I ask some tiny comments? Remind the administrators that our process, and what is that contract expiring? What is your deadline on completing?
I think it expires at the end of this fiscal year. So, it'll be 6:30, 15, which is to set. So, our, our goal is to try to complete it, since the negotiations have been completed, our goal is to, is to take action this month, before the end of this year.
We had checked with, many, so we checked with our council. We're not in any delay or problems with timing for the 7:50. In other words, we have, we have tentative agreement subject to the board, but it's considered at the 7:50. That occurs on that night, or I'm not in the scope of, as a right number one.
Speaking of timing, I noted that the meeting on the 15th, our normal board meeting would meet at 7:00, but we've got the special meeting at 5:30 to discuss that. Is it your understanding that you need about an hour and a half?
No, I don't think we need an hour and a half.
But we do have our attorney coming, so, a little compilation is, I think.
My, my guess, it's hard to say, my guess, depending on the question, it'll either be over in, well, half an hour, or it'll take an hour and a half, I don't think so. I thought those were all canceled.
I think, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's wise to leave the time, and it's hard to say if I'll actually need it, but it could be 13, that's possible, possibly.
It was hard to, well, it was hard to put it at the end, but our attorney's coming to say, you know, come 8:00, come 9:00, or 10:00, so, I just thought that was, that used to be.
Questions? Any questions?
Well, I'm just thinking, that's before the education meeting, correct? So, maybe I can speak with Teresa, and if we do finish that early, we could maybe visit the TV studio or do something useful with that, um, before our meeting begins, so that we're not touring then during the meeting.
It's just a very hectic kind of year, as you all understand, and if we can try to condense where we came from, it would be a good thing.
Any other questions? I'll ask you.
Uh, yes. We have a bunch of policies on our agenda for tonight. I just wanted to make note of one thing. One, and I have a question for you, Jen, but last month, we had, we read through a grievance procedure, which we read through and approved for our first reading as if it were a policy, and then when we were getting it cleaned up for a second, we realized it was actually a regulation, and it didn't need to come to the board. It was a regulation related to the policy that we had passed a couple of months ago. So, so that's why it's not coming back for a second reading, I'm sure you would all pitch that up, as you were looking at your agendas. But I just wanted to let you know why it disappeared. It just goes into the book as a regulation, and nobody had any issues with it anyway, so I just wanted to let you know. Regulations, we don't have a lot of regulations in our policy manual, because they're sort of up to the administration to put into place however they want to administer the policy that we set, but on a section, we have a few in there, and that happened to be one that was picked up by the cave audit, and I didn't realize it was a regulation the first time, so I apologize for that, but, so that's why it disappeared. And then I have also a question, we have one policy, I should have, I should have realized this before tonight, in under new business, a policy that I would actually like to either table or remove, because I, since, since the agenda was put together, I spoke with Don, and he had some questions and concerns. So, how, how should I handle that? Should I wait till we get to it?
Yeah.
And ask for it to be?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll do that then. Thanks.
Some questions? All right. Long range planning? We didn't meet in November because enough, enough was sort of available, there were negotiations, Washington Board of Finance, both committee members and staff that I hope to invite. I'm thinking, though, I saw the email here that canceled the facilities for the policy meeting on 15th, but since the long-range plan was muted five, maybe we could meet from 5:00 to 5:30, and have the committee meet with the administrators that I suggested, so that we can get a handle on where we are with our long-range planning, because, as I said before, the committee, I believe, is taking its emphasis off of long-range future shippage plans because of the arrival of the agro-science STEM concept, which are really great long-range plans. But we still have to deal with other plans for the elementary schools, and also to support a plan that is delineated, that supports the communities soon. We're going to be asking the community to vote for a referendum for repairs to this building, and it's been made pretty clear that we need to have our DUCs and those, our plans for future shippage in order to support that referendum. And it's already December, so I'd like to be able, if we could, to have at least half an hour to really start a negotiation of that, and see where we are. So, I'll be in touch with, and see if they're, if they're free for the half an hour. Okay. Go ahead, if you just have a second. Okay. Go ahead, if you just have a second.
Okay. Why, at 7:00? We have two policies for second meeting, which is 7.1 policy, 1.4, 1.1, 1.1 position.
Yes. Sorry, I don't have them. Okay. If I remember correctly, we did not have any concerned, we, is long-term officials approved, alternatives. I'm just trying to make sure that the one concern we had from the first reading has been fixed for the second reading, and it appears that it has. That the alternate position was taken out, and it was made part of the policy. In italics, "At no time will a student be released to an officer without one of the following, under arrest of students." So, that was our one alteration from last meeting, and it is the air for second meeting.
We didn't have a, I assume, oh, last paragraph, I think, superintendent directed to.
Oh, to, yeah, okay. Thank you. Last paragraph.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, I had another thought, actually, when I reread this a second time, or a third time, I forget how many times I've reread it. If you look at the bottom of the first page, it, it, sort of in the middle of that, it says, "When police are investigating criminal acts which occurred or may have occurred on school property, or while under the jurisdiction of the district, they may be, they may question students at school when the following are observed, they're going to do it confidentially and conspicuously as possible, and students will be questioned by police in such cases in accordance with the law." Okay. Then it goes on to say, in the last paragraph, "When investigating a possible criminal violation occurring off school grounds or not as part of the school program, police will be encouraged to question students in their homes. However, they may be permitted to question students in the schools when the procedures outlined in 1 and 2 above are observed." The more I thought about that, the less I liked it. If this is something that has nothing to do with the school, then why are we having police come in to question the students at school? It's not like the kids aren't elsewhere during good parts of the day. And I think, I think that schools should be a refuge under all circumstances. And I think when the school becomes a place where children cannot, you know, when they're being questioned by police on things that don't relate to school, unless there's some emergency situation or some, you know, event where the student might be here, and they have other provisions here when there's issues related to weapons and other things of dangers, but if this has nothing to do with the school and no threat, I think it's a bad idea, because what's going to happen is, the student is going to absent themselves from school if they know that they are a subject of this kind of thing at school. And the next thing you know, we're defeating the purposes for which we have kids educated to begin with. And the other thing is, I really don't see the need for it. Certainly, the students are reachable after they leave the building, you know, after 2:25 when they leave, and there's plenty of time during the workday for the police to be able to question them. And I think putting it here in the school when it doesn't involve the school is not a good idea.
Well, I, that's.
Susan?
Sorry. I was, I was, not for a way. The way I see something like that is allow for some flexibility within a policy to allow for questioning to happen in this day and age of, you know, social media and things happening, swift reactions, we very well need to be, may need to occur. And if, if, you know, leave it to the superintendent to make that decision in terms of whether or not, you know, this is the best course of action, or how, you know, is it necessary that the policy needs to allow for that flexibility? I think that's very important in, in, in social media, some of the, sort of things that go on, you know, quick reactions are very important.
Well, and also, there could be some activity that is off school grounds, occurring in school function, on a school bus, for instance. I mean, I think, when you say that it's, you know, if you limit the questioning to be off school grounds, or technically off school grounds crime, it really hampers the investigation, and, you know, sometimes this can happen on school buses or on high streets. The thing that I would like to look at more with weapons, is because it's kind of oxymoronic, the way it's phrased, specifically.
Excuse me, no, I'm sorry. Can we just finish discussing Greg's and I'll have to get back to you.
I was just discussing it all together.
So, people want to address that, so let me just move on. Michelle?
Um, my only, I, I hear what you're saying, Greg, and I, I agree with the sentiment, although I'm just wondering, I don't know the law, but if, if police are investigating, investigating a criminal violation, are we, are we allowed to not permit that? I mean, would they not be able to go find an adult at their workplace? I, I think, I, I mean, without, that, that's one of those language changes that I would be uncomfortable with, without going back to lawyers or something. It, it, you know, it says that we encourage them to, to speak with the student at home, but I don't know what our, how much authority we have to not permit the police in a criminal investigation. I don't.
Well, can I respond to that? Because, you know, it seems to me that is inconspicuously in all these other things they want to do. The fact of the matter is, there will be a child led from the front of this building in handcuffs to a patrol car, and it will be in plain view and witness of, I would guess, on average, probably anywhere from 20 to 100 feet. People have windows, they look outside, they will be taken. It's not like we have a place where you can take them under the school and out through a back entrance. I mean, it's a perp law, is what it is. And, and, and that's the concern that I have, is I don't think that's appropriate in a school. We're not talking about someone who's just, you know, killed 50 people. You're talking about someone who may have been involved in a vandalism act, breaking and entering, or some other thing like that, that is probably, in most cases, I mean, I don't mind making the exception for an exigent circumstance, where the child is fled into the school from committing a crime, and it's a serious crime, and they're attempting, I don't mind saying that that's appropriate, but I just don't, but the problem on these things is, is that it tends to be investigated in an easy way, when it's appropriate, when the police want to work on it, and that happens to be during the school day. You're inviting people into the school to investigate events that have nothing to do with the school. And I just think it's, the school should be not a place where the child feels that they need to avoid, in order to avoid police. And we, I don't think we should be inviting them in under those circumstances. Again, there are circumstances in which it's appropriate, and Valerie makes a circumstance where it's appropriate. However, what it says above is, "The police are investigating," well, actually, police A, there's an R missing from there, "investigating possible criminal acts which occurred or may have occurred on school property or while under the jurisdiction of the school district." So, the ones on the bus, school field trips, and those things, if the police can come in, that, that just provides for that. I'm talking about situations that have nothing to do with the school, and that's what the last paragraph says.
If I may, I was, just to try to answer Michelle's question, and this is not as the board's term, I'm not giving you the rules, which are based on experience. The police can enter a home, or enter any place to question and apprehend a suspect if it's in fresh pursuit, in other words, they see the criminal act occurring, for example, the child runs into the street, or if they have a warrant. They can, you don't have any discretion. They have fresh pursuit, or if they have a warrant, they can enter the school, your home, whatever. If they're not fresh pursuit, and they don't have a warrant, they can only enter by consent. So, I would think, in this circumstance, a situation that's occurred off the school, and the police wanted to speak to a student in the school, that the building principal certainly has discretion to decline that he's coming in, if she felt that it's appropriate, or if she felt it's appropriate. So, I'm comfortable with, understanding Greg's concerns that it's not a place, not a place, just to make the school not a place for refuge. I don't think it would be, it would be abused, and I think that just something that occurred on a Saturday night in one of our towns, or, and the police wanted to come to our school on Tuesday and speak to the student, I think that the principal would have, the superintendent would have discretion to tell the officer that that was not realistic. So, that's my thought. Alan?
Yeah, I think, from what you said about perp law, I think that's probably why you're objecting to this, because it's a lot more dramatic. This just has to do with questioning, it's not arresting, and no one has to be let off and handed up to be questioned. And I was thinking of this, simply as a matter of, I mean, obviously, weigh the difference between the comfort and privacy of the student versus the convenience of the police, but I just imagine as far as you go to see somebody you want to question in their workplace, or where they even know they will be, it's a lot easier than trying to track them down at home or at a venue, which is why, where parents may not be around, where the child may be alone, depending on their age. Here, if they are questioned here, they certainly have the presence of teachers, or advisors of staff, or staff, who are rather, not necessary, but, what's what I'm looking for. It's a good thing to have them available, where parents may not be if they're found at home. So, as I said, I don't think it's a dramatic kind of silence, and it was screaming, it's just a matter of practicality.
I just want to second what Susan was saying. I think, you know, we hire administrators because they have the experience and the knowledge to handle situations appropriately. I would give them the latitude that they need. And I also can see, under certain circumstances, where the administration might want the police to question students, and might be perfectly okay with the fact that students find out that the police are getting involved. If the situation was very serious, I think they would want students to recognize that this is a serious situation. Police are involved now, it's gone up a level, and in some cases, that gets students to, to talk more than they might normally.
I just imagine as far as you go to see somebody you want to question in their workplace, or where they even know they will be, it's a lot easier than trying to track them down at home or at home, which is why, where parents may not be around, where the child may be alone, depending on their age. Here, if they are questioned here, they certainly have the presence of teachers or advisors of staff, or staff, who are rather, not necessary, but, what's what I'm looking for. It's a good thing, to have them available, where parents may not be if they're found at home. So as I said, I don't think it's a dramatic kind of silence he was screaming, it's just a matter of practicality.
I just want to second what Susan was saying. I think, you know, we hire administrators because they have the experience and the knowledge to handle situations appropriately. I would give them the latitude that they need. And I also can see, under certain circumstances, where the administration might want the police to question students, and might be perfectly okay with the fact that students find out that the police are getting involved. If the situation was very serious, I think they would want students to recognize that this is a serious situation. Police are involved now, it's gone up a level, and in some cases, that gets students to, to talk more than they might normally. That, and that, I think, is precisely the problem, because we, we, we are responsible to exhibit or to, to perform the role and frequency of in loco parentis. And I can tell you, I do not know very many criminal lawyers who would suggest that any parent permit the child to speak to the police without an attorney present. I can almost guarantee you that no lawyer would, would think that it's a good idea. And then, we know one thing from watching any of the fifteen thousand police procedurals that are on there, is that it's never a good idea. And I don't know that we should be facilitating this. I mean, I think there ought to be a stricter policy. I frankly don't think that that officer should be allowed to question a student here without the parent being notified, and without the parent having an opportunity to obtain legal counsel, or to refuse to permit the questioning to occur on the school grounds. And, and I don't know how you, you don't disrupt the students in their, in their classes, unless you're going to be able to question during the five minutes between classes. I don't, or maybe during their lunch period, which I'm not sure should be permitted either, I don't know how you do this without disrupting the students' day, or taking them out of class to do this, it does not concern the school, and there aren't exigent circumstances, and there isn't a warrant. These are, these are questioning where they just walk in and do it. And I, again, I think, I have serious reservations about that portion of the policy, because I don't think it's appropriate for us to be making these, permitting these kinds of things, without a little bit more thought about, and, and I, I think we should, we should do this in careful work with our, with our legal advisors, and they should bring in the criminal people to advise us on this, because I think we want to make a good decision. I'm not suggesting there aren't circumstances where it's appropriate, but I think this is too broad.
I will agree with my support of the administration in emphasizing their best judgment in terms of notifying a parent. I think that's reasonable, and other things to be, you know, looked at, language needs to be admitted. But to the same extent, you're talking about protecting someone who may need to be questioned or is wanted, uh, to be questioned by the police. We also need to understand that a lot of crimes may very well involve other students who go to the school. You're talking about the violence that happens off school grounds or something like cyberbullying. We need to show that, show that response, and let others know that it can go to that level, and address accordingly, if there's, if there's another student involved who may have been the, receiving again, whatever celestial happened. So, you know, again, that needs to be possible with the policy.
Hold on, Sean.
I was just going to ask, Pat, as a prior building administrator, I don't know how many times you had to do a police community building, but how, I, I don't, how does that usually work? Is the parent notified? Do the police come to question students?
Well, police will come to question students on, for many different reasons. When they believe that student is a suspect, they're not really there to question them. See, I don't see this so much as someone who has done something that they may be arrested for. I see something where they're trying to get information, you know, cyberbullying, it comes to mind, that there's always things going on, and, you know, you want to trace back to who did what, that kind of thing. We've had issues up here where, you know, it may not happen on school grounds, where kids are involved with different issues in towns, whether it's some kind of fire, or some kind of stealing or something, or that kind of stuff. And it's important that the administration, whoever they are, and what type of school system, and the police department have a good working relationship, because as a building principal, you need them, you need them support. There are times you need them to come in and help you with questioning and help you think through certain issues. With a piece that I, I don't think, I, I do believe that sometimes it is good to have kids leave in handcuffs, especially if maybe there's drugs involved, and kids say, oh, because the, the issue that happens here is that anything that happens off of school grounds, if it disrupts the educational process, it's part of the school. And with social media now, most of the time, it always disrupts the, the educational process. So kids are not being disciplined in some way. The thing that, I understand what everybody's saying, I like the flexibility in this, and I also like number two, where it says students can be questioned by the police in such cases in accordance with the law, so that following the law, you know, there's always an administrator there, and, you know, if it is a serious situation, the police will say, you know, let's bring the child to the office and let's call their parents. You know, so they're, so, so I, I want us to, to separate kids who just may have information, who they want to talk to, and then kids who are suspects, they're, they're treated differently. And, you know, if, some of these things, as a principal, and I had two assistants, so I didn't have to do a lot of investigation, but investigations can take days. I mean, it just disrupts everything you're trying to do, especially when it has to do with social media. So that's how I feel about it. If that helps, um.
Now, I wanted to play out the difference between, because we did remember this in our policy committee, and the initial language of policy in that area was, there were three, we were down to the one and two in that section, and it used to be three. Two, it was longer, said every attempt we made to notify the student's parents, so they may be present during the questioning, school principal or his, her, destiny will be present. Administration shall maintain a written record of all such interviews conducted. That was all taken out and replaced with the language you see there now, which is students will be questioned by police in such cases in accordance with the law. And I remember this specifically because I asked, well, and then there was number three incidentally, which was preferably an officer doing the questioning will wear suitably and clothes, obviously to minimize tumult. Well, and, and I remember questioning then, and I believe Kim was in the meeting with this, and I said, well, are we taking out an awful lot of teeth from this? And the point is that the language that says students will be questioned by police in such cases in accordance with the law, is stronger even than that language that was removed, which is pretty strong. And, and if you go to the, to the general statutes, you'll see that this kind of questioning of a youthful offender is much more strict than the questioning we might be accustomed to seeing on our data capture, where it's kind of squealed in, you know, human ass questions, that the court has to decide whether there is anything, if you're asking questions, to, to base that questioning on, knowing that it's a youth that you're talking to, and the law states that you have to have the administration, the parent, everybody. So it's even stronger than what used to be, every attempt we made to notify the student's parents, so they may be present, uh, questioned. That old language, which we have in existence now, Greg, is very feeble as far as having a parent there to, to protect the child's rights in questioning. That's what we removed and replaced with such cases in accordance with the law, which is more strict, and we should definitely make sure that that parents.
And I agree with that was suggested by our associate, Ed Kim, who both worked on the policy.
One of the things that, I mean, I think Pat just sort of said it all there, which is that there is no discretion. You will not, if, if, if the, if the administration or the building principal feel they need to maintain a good relationship with the police, then the decision is very easy. You will always let the police in, you will let them do what they want, and you will never say no. Because, that's just practical matter, what happens, that's what you just described, is the situation in which you want to cooperate, you don't want to say no, because if you say no, they may not be there when you need them. And that's precisely why the policy should stay, that absent, a list of exigent circumstances, they should not be set for on school grounds period. That should be the policy of the region. Because again, none of these things have to do with what's going on in school. I'm not talking about a social media thing that impacts the school, it's because they're, they're going after kids. One can find the next in that circumstance. I'm talking about the circumstance in which this kid is being questioned, because they think they might know something about some act of vandalism that occurred in the town, you know, whatever it may be, and they want to come onto school grounds, take the kid out of class, disrupt their day for the purpose of conducting that investigation, which I just don't think it's appropriate. We're not letting the armed forces come in and take kids out of class to interview them, as for possibly maybe going into the armed force. We're not permitting marketers to come in and do focus groups with our students by taking them out of class to do those focus groups. There's a lot of people we don't let in. The police investigating something that's a crime on school grounds, appropriate. The police investigating something else, what does that have to do with school? And why is the school throwing out the welcome mat, saying you can come in and do it as long as the principal doesn't object under circumstances where you've already admitted the principal isn't going to object? Again, I, I think it's, I think it's bad policy, and I, I don't think it's appropriate, I think, I think it violates the concept of in loco parentis, because the parent is, this is likely in loco parent, who's the loco parent. It's the parent that, can I smoke dope tonight? The answer is always yes. As long as the answer is always yes, there is no in loco parentis, and hence it violates the basic principle under which we operate. That's what, that's the problem I have.
Sean, is this, the language of this policy that was just received from CAPE?
Uh, yes. It was received from CAPE, and it was reviewed by our school resource officer and.
Do you have a motion yet? I'd like to make a motion, and it's up for a second.
Second.
And I would also, I'd like you to move to a different section.
Well, it's been moved in second because there are any rules.
That's me.
She said something about weapons.
I, I would like to finish this discussion before moving on to a different section.
I think we'd beat this one to death. I mean, if you want your police to have access under the direction of the administration, or you don't want police up here at all for some reason, that they're the, you know, the evil element, and I think it depends on individuals to vote on whether or not, your grade is saying, I'd agree with.
All right.
And I'd like to go into something else, but we've already heard you, Greg, so I won't get off or anything more.
Another meeting, you're not going to let people discuss this stuff? Greg?
I just have a question.
Yes.
If a parent rode the school and said, under no circumstances will you ever permit a police officer to question my child on the premises of that school that relates to something that's, didn't happen at school, would you honor that, or would you not honor it? Yeah, I'm asking you.
I would ask councils to look at it, and councils said that was okay, that we would honor it, just like we do in part of the military. We have a duty every year to hand over the names and addresses of all students, that's, I don't know what year it starts, but you can opt out of that. So, we put that in the high school newsletter, and it says, if you do not like your child's information, go into the military, you can opt out. So that's a legal thing. We follow the legalese. I, I, one thing that I said, I guess I wanted to just bring up, first of all, we don't always say yes to everybody. But the next thing is that we have a working relationship with the police, and the police up here is very supportive of our children. They're not here to hurt our students, they're not here to hurt them, to jail them, to, they're here to help. So, you know, I, I'll give you a perfect example, something, you know, somebody runs away, a student runs away, it's not a school issue, it's a home issue. But there could be kids in the school who are friendly with her or him, who have texted, who have heard, and it may just been, you know, listen, we have a student missing, have you heard anything? So I, I don't want us to limit where we don't have that flexibility. That's my only concern about this. But we are not giving away the store. But we do have a positive working relationship, especially in this day and age with everything that has happened with school safety and security, you know, you have to have all the hands and eyes on deck, and we have to have a collaborative relationship.
Well, then, the only thing I would say is, I, I could, I, I, I think you made a very good point, very good and valid point. But I think that the board should undertake to do its job to make sure that these, that we are getting some discriminating decisions. And I think the only way to do that, I, I would suggest that perhaps you can come back to this with a plan, but what I would suggest is that every time a student is questioned, there needs to be a law created, the board needs to periodically review it, to see if it is true that we sometimes have said no. Not every time a student's questioned, every time there's a request to come on the school grounds, I'd like to know under what circumstances and why. Because it could be this policy is appropriate and we're exercising discretion. On the other hand, it could be that we're not. And the only way is for the board to exercise an oversight role to review it. It could be a committee of the board, it could, it obviously has to be, it may have to be an executive session if it could be done, but, but some, we should know that this policy is being, is not being abused in favor, not abused, but it's not being slanted in favor of simply all of a sudden, yes, that's all.
I think we're creating a problem where there isn't a problem, and I think we're just causing even more trouble. If you have evidence that there's a continual abuse of that policy, that you know administrators that are abusing their authority, do you know firsthand, you've heard stories, then I'd be the first person to say we need to look at it as a board, but I, I don't see any evidence for that.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem, and I'll speak to the second, but then it's about the building principals keeping a law of these things, I assume they would do that anyway. And it would be available, I don't know if we have to create a committee, but if it is available, inspection by board members or the executive session, and on, as in places, you have a comment on that?
I do. I, I don't have a problem with the principals keeping a law. I, I think there's a confidentiality piece for board members to be able to, to view the law. I would think that that would be, you know, interesting.
Redact the students' names.
Oh, no, it's, it's just, you know, we're, you know, I know that safety and security is a big deal, I believe it, and I'm not fooling it, but, you know, we're an academic institution, and every, every time you add a layer of this bureaucracy, you're taking away from teaching and learning. And I, I believe, Mike, also, you know, it's not an issue right now. We have a good staff, we have people who are working hard to protect our students. You know, since we've been here, the police are not here often questioning our students at all. I can give you an example, we said no today. You know, a police called, and they wanted information about a student who graduated four years ago. And they wanted to know about the discipline racket, and we said, you know, it's fine, because that's not their business, it's expunged when you graduate, and, you know, so we said no. I'm going to log that, I mean, you know, that kind of stuff is like, it's weird, it would just be a more, another layer of work, but, you know, I don't know. And I do think we're letting up against obstructional justice, too, maybe a little further, and it's not a position. And we're making a problem that none exists of. If there's an abuse, we'll hear about it, and I don't think of any paperwork, any law needs to be made, I think it's ridiculous. I'd like to move on to another question.
Good.
Thank you. Under weapons, second paragraph, weapons that are illegal, weapons are always illegal. Weapons that are not illegal but are in violation of school policy, all weapons are in violation of school policy, so I'd like to clean up that language. So, second paragraph for weapons.
Well, no, I'm not sure that that's accurate. The reason is, if you've ever taken a course in self-defense, those courses have used weapons all the time.
We don't allow them in the school.
We do, we have them in booth preschool all the time. They have, they've been doing Korean karate at booth preschools since I lived in Roxbury.
What are the weapons?
They use, they use various types of sticks, they use nunchucks, they use all kinds of weapons.
It's part of our academic?
It's part of, it's an activity that goes on in the school building. I'm not suggesting that, but if, if you were to teach that as a part of the physical education curriculum in a high school, you'd have to use them. The, the question, I think, is what constitutes a weapon, why is it worded this way? There must be a reason why.
We only have that definition in our policy.
Hold on, please.
No, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, he can speak of it any time, and then we try to make some kind of comment to your left, or suddenly, you know, taking over the meeting, or speaking out of turn. But Mr. Chair can talk and talk, and repeat himself, this is not fair.
When people have spoken on subjects that are close to their heart, they'll all go on and on.
So I will, too. We've already had a, a conversation, a definition about weapons in our previous policy, and as far as I know, almost everything is considered illegal in the school.
Thank you. Michelle? Sean?
Well, the way I'm reading that paragraph, it's saying if a weapon is found, weapons that are illegal, not meaning in the school, but illegal in the state of Connecticut or whatever, should be turned over immediately to the police as well as ammunition. Weapons that are not illegal by the state of Connecticut or whatever, but are a violation of school policy, which we have decided is everything, may be retained by the principals. So, the police, for example, you don't have to turn over a knife because it's legal in the state of Connecticut, but it's illegal to the school. So, you have to leave that with the principals. So, it's... Do you see what I'm saying? So, it's not illegal. What's illegal in the state versus what school policy allows. And school policy doesn't allow any kind of weapon.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Yes. The most important thing is to approve 1411. One portion of the first, for secondary, in terms of any favor. All those in favor? Two typo corrections.
Yes, yes. I have those written down.
Those two typo corrections. All those in favor? Rashid Gans.
Okay.
Any staying? Motion passes. Next. Second. Fourth second reading policy, 2400 administration.
Yes, this is about evaluation. And I don't know why the spacing got all strange on this version. I don't remember it looking like this before. Yeah. We... I pulled it. We've had some issues with... So, our policies are hosted by CADE on the website and then we have to get them back from them. And I don't know if we're using different computers. We have formatting issues and I know Sue has a lot of time working on that jumping made as well. But anyway, so please, we'll work on the formatting. But this is all about evaluation. It's in relation to the CED, which is the Department of Education Evaluation. Education Evaluation. Well, Educator Evaluation and Development, that's what it is. And it's based on recent legislation that has passed. And I don't believe we had any changes from the first reading.
Move to the top of the second reading.
Second. All right, so move to the second. All those in favor approving 2400 Administration? Say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Last, 1473, Policy 5118, Non-Resident Tuition and Diversion.
I am... I don't believe... I have my notes from last time. I don't believe we had any changes to this policy from first reading to second reading.
We still have child care. Are we deciding that those... It appears we cleaned up.
Yeah, we switched that. So, we actually had two first readings on this policy because after the original first reading, there were so many changes. It went back to policy. We brought it forward. We took out babysitters.
It was very minimal.
It's very, very minimal. And the reason we've been working on this policy is because we added our... The newer, I think it's 5118 point, I don't remember now, three, which is the big tuition policy for non-resident attendance that we worked on over the summer. And this is with our original policy, which sort of deals with non-tuition attendance.
Move to a separate second reading.
Second. All right, so move to the second. Is there any further discussion? Can you just... Any further discussion? All those in favor approving Policy 5118, Non-Resident Tuition and Diversion? That's the second reading. Say aye.
Aye.
Any staying? All right, passes. Right, moving on to new business. Four policies, put to the policy commission, right? We're invested.
Yes. Just a second. Okay. Just, the next policies are in our business, you know, the 3000s have to do with the business office. And when we reviewed this in our committee, Bob Geeson was there, we wanted to make sure that everything that was proposed by CADE made sense to him. And most everything that we're cleaning up has been probably in place for a long time because we're just now catching up to laws that have been passed. So, if you read... If you look, you'll see in yellow, anything that was added, the capital non-recurring expenses, that's the capital reserve fund, the 1% that we've been... We've been doing for several years now. Once that law was... Once it was made available, Bob made us aware of it. And we just are now getting the policy in line with current practice.
Move to a separate first reading.
First second.
Second.
All right, move to the second itself. And so make sure we check the yellow was added by the committee.
Uh, no, it was proposed... It was written by CADE. This came up as an... On our audit as needing revision. And you can see down below in the legal references, it shows the...
Thank you.
Yeah. On the long-term section, I think it's fine the way it is. I think it's important, though, that board go about the process of creating an investment policy right through. Just so we understand, an investment policy is not fixed on some bonds. An investment policy does set guidelines in which you, whoever's investing those bonds has to act. For example, an investment policy might say, "You can't invest in any puts, calls, or things. You can't trade on margin." There'd be a whole raft of things in there that limit you. You might say that you... Board needs to approve any change in allocation between investments and ordnance. You know, you have to maintain at least 80% in fixed income, you know, bonds. 20% can be in equities, but you can't have certain kinds of equities. Investment policy statements are very, very tailored to trying to give guidance to the investment forces to know what types of investments are not appropriate in that kind of fund. And the only way you can get there is with awful much advice from investment professionals and others. So, I'm just... I'm less concerned about the language of it, which is fine, and more concerned about the process of it, which should be very... Having served on an investment committee of a corporation and having chaired that committee, I know how involved it is to do those kinds of policies.
If I might, take care of Wells Fargo, you're legally developing a review yearly. It's technically a financial IEP. And so, you know, that's gonna be ongoing and there's a fiduciary responsibility. The pension plan is implicit, but that plan is yearly.
And it's very much more restricted that a corporation, you know, it's part of the fund. There's many rules and regulations of what you can and can't do with these kind of funds. You can't do those kind of derivatives and all of those things are just illegal.
No, I'm sure that...
You can't invest overseas. You can't... There's a whole raft of things that... That's one of the reasons and criteria that Wells Fargo, they're very into to making sure that once the parameters are set toward the mix of what you want to do, and you don't straight get into its derivatives, puts, calls, all those things that you're referring to. No, I don't disagree with you. I think that you would want to have... You would want to have relatively safe investments. But I'm just not sure the party who is actually investing the money is the right person to be leading that discussion. And it was typical of the corporation that I was on as board, that we had outside people. And I think that that is typical of most investment committees, that you have outside advisors who are not involved in direct investment or money because they don't have a conflict of interest. It's not that they... That this firm, that Wells would act in a bad manner, no, not at all. But in order to avoid the appearance of it, it's frequent that you get an outside consultant to advise you when you're at the beginning of trying to formulate such a policy. Just so you get it with someone who owes, that they're sole allegiance to you and makes no money on you other than whatever fee they pay for their services. You know, it's not a... I just think it's probably a good idea to do it in that kind of way to avoid any potential problem. That way you'll have confidence once the policy's in place. And your advisor should be in those quarterly reports and should contain a list of anything that's out of compliance with the policy, so you know where something... And again, that doesn't happen usually. That what happens is you own something that's within compliance and then something within that issue gets sold or traded, or they acquire a company or something that then is not in compliance. And so, you have to liquidate that asset. So, what they generally do is report those things. I mean, I've done this. I did that for 20 years. Sorry. You know, I'm used to that. I'm sorry. It's dry stuff.
Is there any other... Move to the second, fourth, first reading. All those in favor approving 3292, investing to first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any staying? I think it passes. Next is Policy 514.
Yep, this is the policy that I would ask the board to consider tabling because I spoke with Don after we put this on the agenda and he had some concerns. And we... I would like to bring it back to the committee.
Move to table.
Second. Any discussion? All those in... Yes, sir. All those in favor? Yes. Motion to table 3514. Say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any staying? All right, 3514 is tabled.
Thank you very much.
Next is 1437, Security of Buildings and Grounds.
Yes, so 3517, depending on how... There... You should have two copies of this. Well, there were two emailed to you. The longer one is the new proposed version. The old one is the short one that has just five small points. If you look at this, Security of Buildings and Grounds...
Hold on, I'm sorry. Which one do you want to look at?
Let's look at the one that's being proposed. Okay, don't look at the old one. Look at the new one. It's... It'll have a first reading down at the bottom. It's number one is a paragraph instead of a sentence. So, this talks about developing a school safety plan, among other things, which these things we have done over the last few years. We've updated policy. This, for whatever reason, this is just falling back. It's under the business section of it. So, I'm trying to... I'm looking for the legal references. Anyway, when the building administrators looked at this, this is all stuff that we have been doing. It's additional language that's above and beyond our old policy. So, obviously, if you have questions, please ask. But it is actually not new practice for our district. It is just coming into alignment with what we're actually doing and what the laws is we should be doing.
Move to the second, first reading.
Okay, second. Move to the second.
Yeah, I just have a question. I see a couple items in here, like conducting a security vulnerability assessment for each district school every two years. Do we think that is not too frequent? Or who's going to conduct it? Is this an outside entity that conducts this? Is this a committee of people within the district, like the resource officer, building principals, or whatever? I'm just wondering, who conducts these assessments?
Yes, we have done that. Mark Rego did them last year with all of the principals in... Well, not all the principals. Steve Sorty did it with the two watcher primary in Chicago. And Mark Rego did it with Berham and Boothrey with the principals. And each school has a staff, a school and safety committee, and they talked about it. We have all that information. We also have a district school safety committee. And we're working on collaborating everybody's plans and, you know, making improvements where I can be. And that's with myself, Bob, Don, Rocky Thompson...
Barbara.
And Barbara, I saw her. So, we are doing that. It's very important as part of state statute now.
Right. And it's prescribed as to having these committees in place in the county theater in two years? I'm wondering if there shouldn't be... Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to... I couldn't... May I? I was wondering if there shouldn't be some coordination between that... When that group functions, there'd be some informing of facilities, even through Don or the facilities committee. Because a lot of these assessments may involve issues that the facilities committee may be either number one, on top of, or number two, able to work into plans. Otherwise, you've got two ships cast in. And I was just suggesting maybe there ought to be some mention of that.
If our facilities manager is also under the... Which facilities committee is it playing for? Which is? I expect that.
I wasn't... You didn't mention that.
All those in favor approving 3517, Security of Buildings and Grounds for first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? All right, passing. And lastly, 3542.31, Freeable News and Price Lunches.
Yes. All right. There are... Wait, are there two? How do we do this? There's two. The original is really, really short. And the one that's being proposed is relatively short as well. You can see that there are a lot of legal references and Bob made us aware of the fact that the language for the lunch program, the federal reimbursement program, changes every year. So, what the policy committee opted to go forward with was a policy that was very short and basically says, "We will follow all applicable state and federal guidelines," so that we are always compliant. Because some of the other sample policies had, you know, "We will do this, we won't do that," and that could be outlawed the following year. So, it's a very brief paragraph saying that we will follow all the laws and it references the laws that are in place at the moment.
Yes.
Move to the second, first reading.
Second.
And the second question. It seems to me we opt out of this more often than anything else.
Well, I was gonna ask.
And so, the shorter might be the better.
Right. The longer version of it would be out of compliance still. The way they keep changing is they issue whatever levels. Oh, there's... We're up to like 62 of them so far this year of... So, if you had put something in place that was so prescriptive, it would be constantly out of compliance. So, if we're following all the regulations that we need to follow, we will stay in compliance. You don't have to be in certain aspects of the program. That's what we opt out of.
Well, then, to follow that, then, why would we want to change it and make it more specific? We can opt out. I mean, wouldn't it be better just to stay with the original one-sentence, two-sentence policy?
I'm sorry. Can I just follow the... What is it that we opt out of? We opt out of the new version?
No, we don't... We opt out of compliance with type of real... Acquirements.
requires us to do, because we're still in compliance.
Is, is that, in your estimation, effective, that this policy is being asked? The policy that's before us that we're being asked to approve, are you, is acceptable to you? Are you only in fear of, are you, uh, here than you are?
So, we don't, so we don't opt out of the National School Lunch Program?
We only opt out of a portion that is so prescriptive, it's state compliant.
But when we had that vote, we are not given anything more specific, other than the National School Lunch Program, and so we opt out of that.
There, there is more prescription being, uh, now you get the language for your permission.
But, but once again, it, I might be wrong, but it seems to me that every year we have a quick vote, we're, we're out of it, and.
Are we getting that language for you?
Well, we're, but we're making it more intense than it's in the second, because all, all the other programs, we've launched in 2010, and probably kicked out in another year. I mean, wouldn't it be, and then you're adding another program, School Breakfast Program. So, if we're an opt-out, we have to opt out National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program in order to be in compliance, or to avoid.
It's a port, it's a portion of that, I'll bring in the language for you, for the text I wrote. I will actually send it to you.
Is it, is it? True. We're not opting out of the federal.
No, we're not opting out of the federal program, which is opting out of.
Right.
I did, I did just opt out of it.
Right, you would be opting out of something, we're not opting out of.
Some districts actually opted out of the whole thing, because it's, it was so prohibitive, they couldn't do that. Uh, we're losing too much money.
A lot of this has to do, evaluative, the fact that there are more programs that need, CADE and the statute suggested that we, um, account for in our policy. In other words, if we didn't opt out of anything at all, our policy would govern that we, um, fulfill, uh, we're in accordance with, for instance, Kids Act of 2010, which didn't exist when we last did this in nineteen ninety-eight. So, basically, it's just making sure that we are still governed by the entire swath of programs, even though we, um, take it for ourselves to opt out of the small.
Yeah, it's, it's those, uh, fundraising that you, if you were totally compliant with it, you would never be able to do any.
Our campaigns and all?
We opted out of them.
Anything else on this policy?
It's been moved to second for a first reading. All those in favor approving 3542.31 for first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any, that's standing, sorry. All right, passing. Any other new business? All those return, move second, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Return. Thank you.